Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, March 16th, 2004. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gru, Han Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, Viagrosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present and a former Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session and before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, this being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, it is our custom to salute our flag. If I can ask Councilmember Miskowski to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Would everyone please rise? Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves and Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves and Ms. Gru seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
This is a general public comment period for today's meeting and having no requests or speaker cards at this time, public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
Before beginning with the regular agenda, there is a request to continue item number 49 for one week and that would be March 23rd.
Members, any objections to this continuance? Seeing none, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 3 are street lighting districts and council should open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to March 30th.
Members, items 1 through 3 now before us and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are opened and without objection continued to March 30th, two weeks from today. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which, excuse me, is also a public hearing, item number four. It's a planning land use management committee report and I believe there are cards from the public.
Would you have one card on item number four? Let's call this matter special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 5 through 33. Item number five, there are three reports on the file and a motion is required. Do you wish to call that matter special?
Okay, do we have a motion? Item number five, if we don't get a motion, we'll call this matter special as we await a motion from the floor. Items 5 through 33 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items and motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings and seeing no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Zine.
Sure, I'd just like to have 33 referred to Budget and Finance.
Okay, members request to refer item 33 to Budget and Finance Committee. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 33 is so referred. Mr. Zine.
Eight special, please.
Eight called special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Smith.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one called special by Mr. Smith. Mr. Garcetti.
Twenty-five for technical amendment.
Eleven through 25?
They're identical and parallel items, but the language we've been informed needs to be amended.
Is that a...
It's basically to delete the language that says, "Direct the CLA and LHD to prepare a resolution for Council 2," end quote, and skip to deny.
Okay, is that circulated in writing as well or should we take this as a verbal amending motion?
It's verbal.
Okay, without objection. We'll consider 11 through 25 with that technical amendment. Mr. Viagrosa.
Item six special.
Six called special by Mr. Viagrosa. Any other specials? Again, colleagues, we do need a motion on item number five. There's not a motion from the floor at this time and item number five will call this matter special. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 34 through 52 and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, the council shall consider items 34 through 52 from today's agenda. We do have cards on item number 52. We'll call that item special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Those public hearings are opened and closed. Specials, Mr. Reyes.
Item 49 special, please.
Forty-nine called special by Mr. Reyes. Actually, that matter's been continued for one more week to the 23rd. So if that's okay, item 49 will be considered one week from today.
Item 50.
Fifty called special by Ms. Miskowski. Any other specials? If there's no further request for specials on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
The next items are closed session, items 53 through 62 and there is a request from the city attorney to continue to March 24th, items 53, 54, and 58.
Members request to continue items 53, 54, and 58 and seeing no objection, those items are continued. Items 55, 56, 57, 59, 60, 61, and 62 are closed session matters. Let's hold those items on the desk. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number four was called special for a card from the public.
Item number four now before us and the council calls forward David Carlat at this time.
Councilmembers, my name is David Carlat and I represent Club Blue on item number four today. I'd like to just make a few brief comments. I've been retained to assist the club in complying with the conditions set by the zoning administrator and I must tell you that it's my position, the zoning administrator was extremely fair and reasonable in setting these conditions. Unfortunately, one condition, condition number 41, requires the club close at 12 o'clock. Now, that may not sound unreasonable except that the fact the club opens at 10 o'clock four days a week. Therefore, the club's being allowed to operate two hours a day, four days a week, and frankly, that's tantamount to closing the club and frankly, I don't know how the club is going to function or operate during this plan approval review period. Now, we are going to file a plan approval review shortly. We believe the club will show compliance with the conditions and all I can suggest to you is that if the purpose of the zoning administrator and of the city of Los Angeles to allow this club to show compliance, the club has to be allowed to operate for a reasonable amount of period in order to show that compliance and two hours a night, four nights a week, does not constitute reasonable compliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I can invite Captain Chambers and LAPD to come forward. Appreciate it. As they're coming up, colleagues, this concerns a club that's in my district in Hollywood where clearly we've been able to work with the police department to make sure that we have a vibrant nightlife. There are many clubs, as our previous speaker is correct in pointing out, that do have later hours, but I do depend on and work very closely with the good work of the Los Angeles Police Department. I was wondering if the police department could just kind of, I think we all have this on our desk, which is the zoning administrator report and some information from the police department, but could maybe update us on your feelings about the club and operations and the reasons why you certainly took a position against those later hours?
Good morning. Excuse my voice, I'm fighting a little laryngitis. I'm Captain Mike Chambers. I'm the commanding officer of organized crime in Vice Division. With me is Lieutenant Rhea Ruiz. He's the officer in charge of Hollywood Vice along with Officer Rose, who's one of his subordinates. I believe it would probably be appropriate to let Lieutenant Ruiz talk about the situation in Hollywood with Club Blue.
Okay, thank you. Lieutenant?
Good morning. Yeah, I'm Lieutenant Ruiz and I represent the Hollywood area. I'm the vice officer in charge. One of the problems that we've experienced with Club Blue over the years has been their inability to follow the current conditions that are in place, specifically condition number 41, which deals with the after-hours use. The condition 41 currently mandates them to empty the club at midnight. These conditions were put in place for obvious reasons. They had an ongoing problem with various types of criminal activity that were occurring there. In a few minutes, I'll introduce Detective Moore and Officer Rose, who will talk about some of the past arrests that were made there and the reason some of these conditions were put in place. But the department is strongly opposed to allowing this condition, number 41, to be deleted and we hope that it is upheld for obvious reasons. They've failed to follow that condition. At the last hearing, which was on March 3rd of this year, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee supported that these conditions remain in place and denied their appeal. Since then, I've sent in officers to see if in fact they were adhering to these conditions and as of March 5th, two days after that hearing, which the Planning and Land Use Management Committee upheld, they continue to violate this condition. The condition states that they remain open only until midnight, but yet I sent undercover team in there and they were open at 1:00 in the morning, serving alcohol and dancing going on. So obviously a violation of that condition. At this time, I'd like to introduce Detective Moore and he can give you a little bit more detail, a history of some of the past problems that have been taking place there.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
How are you, councilman? I'm Detective Moore. I work organized crime in Vice, the Community Problems Unit. This location was brought to my attention in November of 2000 by the assistant zoning administrator, who advised me that she had received some complaint letters. After we received the complaint letters, I facilitated some surveillance and some undercover operations that where the investigation revealed that this location was a nuisance. To mitigate the nuisance, we also facilitated, and to be fair to the owners of the club, I facilitated a meeting with the owners of the club and the neighboring businesses that were being disturbed by the nuisance operation of the club. In that meeting, I emphasized to the club ownership, the importance of following the conditions and that the conditions were to help actually protect them from being a nuisance. Also, what was, what the investigation revealed was that what the neighboring businesses were informed that this business was going to be was a theater supper club and part of their agitation or aggravation with the location was the fact that it never, or it wasn't operating as a nightclub, I mean as a supper club, it had turned into a nightclub and was really negatively impacting the neighboring businesses. One of the major problems was with Myceli's Restaurant, which is directly north of the location. The patrons would harass their patrons coming into their business and trying to patronize their business. There was also a complaint by the business to the south of the location that their customers were being harassed by the clubgoers. And on top of that, what we, there was also a drug issue. All of those issues were addressed and we basically said, you know, listen, the conditions will help you, please follow the conditions. At which Club Blue did momentarily do a better job, however, that wasn't a sustained effort and again, they are still, without exception, have not been in compliance with their conditions. The police department has expended an enormous amount of resources to mitigate this issue as well as we don't want to see a precedent set where a club is a problem for four years and then the last, in the ninth hour or in the 11th hour, they simply comply moderately and even still, as testimony was provided, they still aren't in compliance with their conditions. This club has done what they wanted to do and I believe will continue to do what they want to do unless, unless action is taken and these conditions are upheld.
Okay. Thank you very much for the testimony and for the hard work that you've done. Obviously, I imagine that you and any of us, if there is a sustained period which under what the zoning administrator has determined they could be in compliance with, we would be able to revisit that, but up to this point, you're not satisfied that those, that they've shown necessary, this is about good faith, that that faith can be met. Now, I understand that folks have said, well, we can't turn a profit and keep it open. Well, right now, we need good faith in Hollywood that this, that they can adhere to what our requirements are and until that is met, it's still your opinion that we should not go forward with the change from what the zoning administrator has recommended?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And if I may add, the decision on their part to remain open for two hours, that is totally their decision. They're allowed to open at 11:00 a.m. and remain open until midnight. They've chosen, however, to open at 10:00 p.m. and giving them what they refer to as that two-hour window.
Sure.
But the decision to open that late in the evening is their choice.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Colleagues, I would ask your support in upholding the zoning administrator's hearing today. This action doesn't close down this club. It limits the hours to midnight, which is the responsible and appropriate thing to do here. We're not targeting any group of folks. I know I've gotten a lot of letters from some of the goths and other folks who go to the club and it certainly has nothing to do with the clientele here and we want to be able to provide nightlife for all folks in Hollywood. But three months from now, there will be another plan approval and hopefully if we've made some progress, then in adherence, we can revisit what we're doing, but I ask for your support today. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to rise in support of my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti. I just want to thank Detective Moore and the other officers. They've been working hard and trying to improve our quality of life and this is one of those cases in which we heard the owner. The owner gave us reasons why it couldn't be done. There was finger pointing, but it's even more discouraging now knowing that the detectives have, their undercover operations, continue to see breaking of the law, continue to see essentially just the dismissal of the concerns of the community. So I stand to support my colleague. We did hear this in committee. We did spend quite a bit of time on it and I just want to take an extra moment to thank the officers for their hard work and the planning department in this case. We have to build up our cases. It takes a lot of work and patience and it's important that we support them when they put themselves on the line and when they're doing this kind of work to essentially reinforce the focus they've brought to these parts of the city. I just want to thank Detective Moore and everybody else, the captain, for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Been retained to assist the club in complying with the conditions set by the zoning administrator. And I must tell you that it's my position, the zoning administrator was extremely fair and reasonable in setting these conditions. Unfortunately, one condition, condition number forty-one, requires the club close at twelve o'clock. Now, that may not sound unreasonable, except that the fact that the club opens at ten o'clock four days a week. Therefore, the club's being allowed to operate two hours a day, four days a week, and frankly, that's tantamount to closing the club. And frankly, I don't know how the club is going to function or operate during this plan approval review period. Now, we are going to file a plan approval review shortly. We believe the club will show compliance with the conditions. And all I can suggest to you is that if the purpose of the zoning administrator and of the city of Los Angeles to allow this club to show compliance, the club has to be allowed to operate for a reasonable amount of period in order to show that compliance. And two hours a night, four nights a week, does not constitute reasonable compliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I can invite Captain Chambers and LAPD to come forward. Appreciate it. As they're coming up, colleagues, this concerns a club that's in my district in Hollywood, where clearly we've been able to work with the police department to make sure that we have a vibrant nightlife. There are many clubs, as our previous speaker is correct in pointing out, that do have later hours, but I do depend on and work very closely with the good work of the Los Angeles Police Department. I was wondering if the police department could just kind of, I think we all have this on our desk, which is the zoning administrator report and some information from police department, but could maybe update us on your feelings about the club and operations and the reasons why you certainly took a position against those later hours?
Good morning. Excuse my voice, I'm fighting a little laryngitis. I'm Captain Mike Chambers. I'm the commanding officer of organized crime in Vice Division. With me is Lieutenant Rhea Ruiz. He's the officer in charge of Hollywood Vice, along with Officer Rose, who's one of his subordinates. I believe it would probably be appropriate to let Lieutenant Ruiz talk about the situation in Hollywood with Club Blue.
Okay. Thank you. Lieutenant?
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, I'm Lieutenant Ruiz, and I represent the Hollywood area. I'm the vice officer in charge. One of the problems that we've experienced with Club Blue over the years has been their inability to follow the current conditions that are in place, specifically condition number forty-one, which deals with the after-hours use. The condition forty-one currently mandates them to empty the club at midnight. These conditions were put in place for obvious reasons. They had an ongoing problem with various types of criminal activity that were occurring there. In a few minutes, I'll introduce Detective Moore and Officer Rose, who will talk about some of the past arrests that were made there and the reason some of these conditions were put in place. But the department is strongly opposed to allowing this condition, number forty-one, to be deleted, and we hope that it is upheld for obvious reasons. They've failed to follow that condition. At the last hearing, which was on March third of this year, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee supported that these conditions remain in place and denied their appeal. Since then, I've sent in officers to see if, in fact, they were adhering to these conditions. And as of March the fifth, two days after that hearing, which the Planning and Land Use Management Committee upheld, they continue to violate this condition. The condition states that they remain open only until midnight, but yet I sent undercover team in there, and they were open at one o'clock in the morning, serving alcohol and dancing going on. So, you know, obviously, a violation of that condition. At this time, I'd like to introduce Detective Moore, and he can give you a little bit more detail, a history of some of the past problems that have been taking place there.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Detective?
How are you, Councilman? I'm Detective Moore. I work organized crime in Vice, the Community Problems Unit. This location was brought to my attention in November of two thousand by the assistant zoning administrator, who advised me that she had received some complaint letters. After we received the complaint letters, I facilitated some surveillance and some undercover operations that where the investigation revealed that this location was a nuisance. To mitigate the nuisance, we also facilitated, and to be fair to the owners of the club, I facilitated a meeting with the owners of the club and the neighboring businesses that were being disturbed by the nuisance operation of the club. In that meeting, I emphasized to the club ownership the importance of following the conditions and that the conditions were to help actually protect them from being a nuisance. Also, what was, what the investigation revealed was that what the neighboring businesses were informed that this business was going to be was a supper theater supper club. And part of their agitation or aggravation with the location was the fact that it never, or it wasn't operating as a nightclub, I mean, as a supper club. It had turned into a nightclub and was really negatively impacting the neighboring businesses. One of the major problems was with Myceli's Restaurant, which is directly north of the location. The patrons would harass their patrons coming into their business and trying to patronize their business. There was also a complaint to the, by the business to the south of the location that their customers were being harassed by the clubgoers. And on top of that, what we, there was also a drug issue. All of those issues were addressed, and we basically said, you know, listen, the conditions will help you. Please follow the conditions, at which Club Blue did momentarily do a better job. However, that wasn't a sustained effort. And again, they are still, without exception, have not been in compliance with their conditions. The police department has expended an enormous amount of resources to mitigate this issue, as well as we don't want to see a precedent set where a club is a problem for four years and then the last, in the ninth hour or in the eleventh hour, they simply comply moderately. And even still, as testimony was provided, they still aren't in compliance with their conditions. This club has done what they wanted to do, and I believe will continue to do what they want to do unless, unless action is taken and these conditions are upheld.
Okay. Thank you very much for the testimony and for the hard work that you've done. Obviously, I imagine that you and any of us, if there is a sustained period which, under what the zoning administrator has determined they could be in compliance with, we would be able to revisit that. But up to this point, you're not satisfied that those, that they've shown necessary, this is about good faith, that that faith can be met. Now, I understand that folks have said, well, we can't turn a profit and keep it open. Well, right now, we need good faith in Hollywood, that this, that they can adhere to what our requirements are, and until that is met, it's still your opinion that we should not go forward with the change from what the zoning administrator has recommended?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And if I may add, the decision on their part to remain open for two hours, that is totally their decision. They're allowed to open at eleven AM and remain open until midnight. They've chosen, however, to open at ten PM and giving them what they refer to as that two-hour window.
Sure.
But the decision to open that late in the evening is their choice.
Okay. Great. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Colleagues, I would ask your support in upholding the zoning administrator's hearing today. This action doesn't close down this club. It limits the hours to midnight, which is the responsible and appropriate thing to do here. We're not targeting any group of folks. I know I've gotten a lot of letters from some of the goths and other folks who go to the club, and it certainly has nothing to do with the clientele here. And we want to be able to provide nightlife for all folks in Hollywood. But three months from now, there will be another plan approval, and hopefully, if we've made some progress, then in adherence, we can revisit what we're doing. But I ask for your support today. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to rise in support of my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti. I just want to thank Detective Moore and the other officers. They've been working hard and trying to improve our quality of life. And this is one of those cases in which we heard the owner, the owner gave us reasons why it couldn't be done. There was finger pointing, but it's even more discouraging now, knowing that the detectives have their undercover operations, continue to see breaking of the law, continue to see essentially just the dismissal of the concerns of the community. So, I stand to support my colleague. We did hear this in committee. We did spend quite a bit of time on it. And I just want to take an extra moment to thank the officers for their hard work and the planning department in this case. We have to build up our cases. It takes a lot of work and patience, and it's important that we support them when they put themselves on the line and when they're doing this kind of work to essentially reinforce the focus they've brought to these parts of the city. I just want to thank Detective Moore and everybody else, the captain, for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be heard on item number four? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And before proceeding to the next item, colleagues, we do have a presentation today. We recognize Councilmember Vice at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm joined here by Thera Bradshaw and by Robert Jones, and I'd like to ask all of you to join me in wishing Mr. Jones the very best in his well-deserved retirement. He is completing thirty-five years, thirty-five years of service to the city of Los Angeles, culminating with his service in the Information Technology Agency. And he has a lot of things, a lot of things to his credit that he's done here for the city of Los Angeles. In a sense, you could really say that he helped bring the Internet to city government in the city of LA. But the thing that you will find most interesting about his accomplishments is he is the creator of the council voting system. And I don't know how it works. I don't know how it works. I'm always marveled by the council voting system every time I look over at Mr. Zine's desk and see him making that decision. Does he push the green button? Does he push the red button? It's a fascinating process, but he's the mind behind that engineering marvel that allows Mr. Zine and others to make those decisions. And so, Mr. Jones, we want to wish you the very best in your retirement, but maybe we could hear from you for just a second about this voting system that you created. Folks, please welcome retiring city employee, Robert Jones.
Yeah, thank you very much. Where do I begin? When I first started to do the voting system, I did a rather radical thing. I proposed a brand-new language that had just been invented, hadn't really spread very much, and hadn't really been proven. But I believed a lot in it, and I saw some advantages that was going to take us into the future and make a very extensible and valuable system here. This was an unbelievably complex task. I don't know if any of you have ever thought about what would go into a voting system, but this is a real-time, interactive system. It's almost like doing something that you would do for an industrial process or a space probe or something like that. It's extremely complex. But the interesting thing is, the complexity wasn't the part that gave me the problems on this. I had a working prototype in about two weeks, and then I spent the next six months satisfying the desires and wishes of Mr. Deaton, John Ferraro, and Pat Letcher Healy. And that was where I had the real interesting activities with this. The political aspect, like everything else, is the most important.
Will we just, this is your chance to talk about your service.
The city has a very special place in my heart. I was born about ten miles south of here, and on a clear day, you could actually see City Hall from my yard. So, I've grown up, you know, in the area and, you know, experiencing all that the area has to offer. I remember as a child in elementary school, riding down Spring Street with my parents and looking up at this very building and thinking to myself, someday, I'm going to actually come in and see what that building looks like inside. Now, of course, at that age, I had no idea that I would actually someday work here, and I definitely had no idea that I was going to be spending half my life in this area and around this building. In fact, I didn't start out to become a civil servant. This was kind of a, kind of a event of circumstance. I was going to be an electronics engineer. Aerospace had crashed. All of the jobs were taken up, and my friends that had just graduated were selling shoes. I had very good friends that came to work for the city, and they said, why don't you come here and work? You can spend a year here and then go back when aerospace picks up. I thought, that's a great idea. I came here thinking this was going to be a temporary job, but once I got here, I discovered some things. First, I discovered that the work was far more interesting than I thought it would be. I found it was very worthwhile, very stimulating. Second, contrary to what I had heard about public employees, I found that the people that I worked with were competent, motivated, and dedicated, every bit as much as you would expect from somebody in the private sector. And then finally, I found that working here and contributing to the, you know, to the improvement of things in the city, both for the operation of the city and for the residents, gave me a tremendous sense of satisfaction and pride. I've had an enjoyable career. I wouldn't, I wouldn't give up any part of it, and if given the chance to do it again, I would jump in at a heartbeat. I've been very proud to have been a civil servant and dedicated my working life to improving things for the residents of this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number five was called special. Inasmuch as there are three reports on the file, a motion is required.
Members, do we have a motion, item number five, yet? If not, then we'll continue to hold that on the desk. Madam Clerk, I do believe there's a special one that has been circulated. Let me ask Ms. Misakowski to first speak through the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, a special one has been circulated. It's a matter of being able to meet a, actually, a payroll tomorrow in the police department. We need to shift some money from their regular payroll account to their overtime account so that paychecks can actually be issued this after, tomorrow morning, tomorrow. So, this is something that is actually going to be taken care of later today in Budget and Finance on an ongoing basis for the rest of the year as we deal with the mid-year budget report. But this action needs to be taken today so that the controller can sign the checks and our officers can be paid in the overtime sequence that they have worked. So, I would like to ask that we adopt this unanimously, and then I would like it to go forthwith to the mayor so he can sign it, so this work can begin.
Mr. City Attorney, anything further?
No, Ms. Misakowski summarized it.
Okay. Let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll on the findings, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Special one now before us on the motion itself. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, let's open the roll on special one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
And could I also have forthwith on item forty-eight?
And forthwith on forty-eight, which has previously been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, coming back to item number five, Mr. Garcetti.
Colleagues, this is taking our city ethics laws and making sure they apply to the Community Development Agency. We have three reports, all in concurrence, but I would move the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Report and ask for your approval of this act today. Thank you.
Okay. On item number five, Ms. Misakowski? Ms. Gruehl?
No.
No? Okay. Anyone else on item number five? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
And then the other two reports would be received and filed.
Without objection. Next item.
Next item, item number six, was called special by Councilmember Villarosa.
Mr. Villarosa, item number six.
Were you calling me?
Item number six.
Members, I rise today to, relative to establishing a position of opposition in the city's two-thousand-three, two-thousand-four state legislative program, to the governor's proposal to cap enrollment in the Healthy Families Program. You know, I dare say, members, if there's an issue that Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles should care about, it's the issue of health care for children. In this city, a city where we're number two in the rate that we contract tuberculosis, a city where we have more children who are uninsured than any big city in the nation, a city where people who work every six, every single day, sixty-nine percent of the people on the Healthy Families Program are working every single day here in the city of Los Angeles, and their children don't have health care. The idea that at this time, we would retreat from the effort that we've made over the last few years to reduce the number of uninsured children in this city and this state, to me, is untenable. The fact that we would cap and freeze the enrollment at its current level of seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand children is the wrong way to go. And so, this proposal, this resolution on our part, would say that the city of Los Angeles is on record as opposing any kind of cap like this that would unfairly and arbitrarily deny children the right to health care. Remember that the Healthy Families Program was passed by the Gingrich Congress. Yes, it was passed back then by the Congress that spoke about their contract with America and were unwilling at the time to support health care for children. Even that Congress understood that children have to be a priority, that we can debate about whether or not we can include everyone in our health care initiative, but children have to be a bottom line. I would hope that the city of Los Angeles would stand up and say that yes to children, yes to health care, and oppose the governor's proposal to cap this program.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Villarosa, for seconding this. Colleagues asked your support in this today. I think it's critical, especially, there's a local angle to this, too, because the city is increasingly trying to do its part in making sure that we get enrollment on healthy families or in healthy families for our children and families here in Los Angeles. We have some of the worst rates in the state, whether it's for college scholarships, whether it's looking at our literacy rates, whether it's our earned income tax credit. The numbers of families that qualify for these programs versus the numbers that actually get into them is excruciatingly low, especially as we compare ourselves throughout the state and in some of these programs nationwide. As we are pushing these numbers up and doing our best efforts to make sure whatever point of contact we have, be it in a library, be it in a school, and I know USD has done a tremendous amount in expanding our Healthy Families, Healthy Children outreach, or whether it's in another city facility, our Wreckin' Parks facilities, we have to make sure that we don't have this cap there, because in doing that, we really say to those who are the neediest, our poorest families, those who are working hard already, that health care is beyond their reach. So, this will be a very loud message. I know Governor Schwarzenegger has done a lot for young people in this state and throughout this country, and we appeal to him to continue on that record, and we know that he will do the right thing and the legislature will do the right thing, but we ask other cities to join with us to speak with one voice, and I ask for your support today. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item six is approved. Next item, please.
Item number eight called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine on item number eight, and I believe Ms. Misakowski is stepping out on this one? Okay.
Oh, she's, yeah, okay. Is there a representative here from the department? Good morning. Thank you. A couple of questions I have. I attended a meeting last night in the Valley, and there were some apartment owners there, and they mentioned that they received information regarding this program. They sent out notice. They received a second notice saying it was held, and I'd like some clarification on that. And the other question I have is on the owners paying annual fees on time. How many are paying on time and how many are delinquent?
Okay. My name is Kent Simmons from the Housing Department. On the issue, when we, it was always the council's intention that the fee would be fully recovered from the tenants so that the landlord could get a complete pass-through onto the tenants. Everybody is covered on the RSO. And we originally, when we sent out the billing notice, we said that that was the council's anticipated program. However, the mechanics of actually getting the transmittal and getting in front of the council to get that approved did not happen until very recently. So, we had to send out a subsequent notice that said, for the time being, you can only recover a dollar a month, not the full two-twenty-seven of the new fee. But we also told them, and again, this was council's intention, as you read in this transmittal, is that they will be able to make up the recovery of the full amount for this year. So, we got to put the mechanics in the ordinance to make sure that happens. I hope that answers your first question.
How many, how many of those notices went out?
We sent them to seventy-five thousand properties.
Okay, so seventy-five thousand owners received a notice.
Yeah.
And then we had to send another seventy-five thousand notice to say in that the first notice disregared.
Right. Because what happens is, in the current ordinance, it is locked onto a dollar a month.
Right.
So.
And then where was the hang-up between the first notice going out anticipating this as would be implemented, where we are today?
We wrote the transmittal in December, made its way. It had to go through a couple of committees, and it finally didn't get solved till February.
Well, did your department jump the gun before final approval was reached?
No.
I'm trying to figure out why seventy-five thousand people, and I didn't have that many at this meeting last night, but the people who were there were concerned as to why notice was given and then rescinded, and they're like in limbo now.
Well, they're not in limbo. They're getting clear direction now. I think if we hadn't let them know that that was the intention to get full cost recovery, they would have been just as concerned of only getting a dollar returned and would have been upset about the dollar seventeen they could not recover. So, we tried our best to tell them that this will happen. As we qualified in the first notice we gave to them, we said, this is what the council intends, but however, we may have to get back to you and clarify it later, which we did.
And then when is this going to be effective?
When will it be effective? Well, once you approve this today, then we have to get the ordinance written by the city attorney's office, so it's a matter of getting the ordinance back.
Okay. And then how many are delinquent? How many of the seventy-five thousand?
About twenty-five percent of the property owners do not pay on time.
And the rest are on time with their payment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to add on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for those questions, too, Mr. Zine. We had this in committee, colleagues, and the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles asked if we couldn't look at what was being proposed and actually reduce the rates that were being paid. And working with them, we met that threshold. There are always folks then who say, you can't raise it at all, and we shouldn't raise it, but we believe this is fair. It doesn't up to a hundred percent penalty unless you're six months delinquent. So, like many fees, like many taxes, like the IRS, other folks, when you're delinquent for that long, we have to send a message that these fees need to be paid. But it is passed through to the tenant, something that tenant groups could live with in this case, but it'll make sure that we do a better job of meeting our goals for timeliness of skep, infection, sorry, inspections, little slip of the tongue there, and make sure that we can make sure that every single apartment here is up to code and that people have a safe and decent place to live without putting that on the back of good landlords throughout this city. So, ask for your approval today. It does just that. It reduces from the original proposal based on the advocacy of AGLA, which should be happy with what we've done here today, and I think it does it in a fair way that also makes sure that the bad landlords have a message loud and clear that if you are delinquent for this long, that you will have to be penalized for that. So, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I rise in support of this effort. And one, I just want to take a minute to address Mr. Kent Simmons. Just want to congratulate him and his staff, inspectors. The other day, I walked into a meeting where I actually saw inspectors, Alba de Alba, with community advocates, with attorneys, with the county officials on the lead abatement programs. And it's this new spirit of collaboration that I see forming that's going to allow us to be more effective and with policies like this and the leadership of Councilmember Garcetti and everyone else on the committee, that we continue moving in a direction that speaks to how we leverage what resources we have and trying to meet this demand that we have for housing and preserving and maintaining what we need to maintain. So, thank you very much for your hard work. I rarely publicly get to say this, but I just want to congratulate you and the inspectors and everyone else for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Other members on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 31, call special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, if I can turn the matter over to Mr. Villarrealosa, the chairman of the committee speak first, and I'll speak afterwards.
Absolutely. Mr. Villarrealosa.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Members, we have an opportunity to exert leadership in the region. You know, we all read the papers, and we've read many times now, just about every year, that Los Angeles has, is the most congested region, not just in the state, but in the nation, and some would say indeed the world. And when you look at that congestion and what we've done about it, it's clear that transportation has to be one of our most important priorities. Later in the month, we're going to have an opportunity to discuss, in a joint hearing with the Senate Transportation, the cuts that have occurred at a state level and the impact that those cuts have on our ability to reduce congestion in the region along the 101, where Mr. Labange and Ms. Grul are working very hard to address congestion problems. We know that in this region, we've talked about our airports and that we can't put all our airport passengers in one place, that we need to look at Palmdale in Ontario, that we need to do everything possible in this region to address those issues. We know that the region, for some time, under the leadership of the Southern California Association of Governments, has done just that, and unfortunately, Los Angeles has been missing in action. And so, we believe that it's time for us to be a part of the debate, it's a time for us to be a part of the solution, it's time for us to engage in the problem-solving on a regional basis that's so critical to addressing this issue. In that vein, I rise today to support this Transportation Committee report concerning the city's participation in the proposed Maglev High-Speed Rail Joint Authority. There are questions, make no question about it, there are some issues. We believe those issues can be resolved in the EIS. We had two full meetings where this committee looked at the issue. There was a lot of debate, frankly. There's not a consensus of opinion in the city family about the issue. One thing is for sure, however, for us not to participate, for us not to go forward is the wrong way to go. We believe that many of those questions can be answered in the EIS. We've directed staff to do that, but most importantly, what we believe happens here is not just that the city goes on record as wanting to be a part of this joint powers authority, but the city is providing the leadership in the region that's critical as we address the problems of congestion management, transportation in this region. And so, I urge your aye vote, and I'm thankful to my colleagues, Councilmember Smith and Labange, who voted unanimously to support this project.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to support this as I did in committee. When I grew up in Los Angeles, a young boy, Los Angeles and California led the world in transportation planning. Through the 50s and 60s, we were the model, which the rest of the country followed. It has only been in recent years that we've fallen behind, and now we find ourselves in the bottom of the 50 states rather than the top of the 50 states. I think that's a tragedy. I was in this chamber in the 80s when we talked about light rail and the first initial operating system of the subway system, and there was tremendous opposition to that. Yet, as we stand here today, our light rail system, MetroLink, takes 38,000 passengers a day, MTA, and the subway system doing a tremendous job of moving passengers through the local area, but we need a real regional rapid transit system. I am not convinced that the Maglev is the only answer, but it is the beginning of a process, we must find the answer. The important thing is, the chairman so eloquently stated, is we need to be a player in this. We have not been a player. We've been sitting on the sidelines while the rest of the region has come together with a plan. Los Angeles has to play the significant and key role in the planning of transportation on the regional level. More importantly, this gives us the opportunity, open up LAX to Ontario and to the San Fernando Valley to get to the Palmdale Airport, an investment this city made 45 years ago as a future airport, and it's an investment we've never been able to use because we don't have a transportation element that takes people from the San Fernando Valley to an alternative to LAX. It also gives us an opportunity to move out towards Orange County, and quite frankly, I really don't care what happens to Orange County, I think they created their own problems, but their problems has fallen back on top of us, and that is what happens at LAX. By opening up the line through Orange County, by opening the line to Ontario, opening the line through the valley to Palmdale, we take pressure off LAX and allow us to more efficiently use our airport system in the region. So, I think this is the key to the future of Los Angeles, it is the key to the region, it is the right decision. More importantly, if we find at any point in this process that this is not the answer for us, we can always pull out of it and move on to something else. But we have to begin that system. We have to be able to give the opportunity that some council 10 or 15 years from now, when none of us are here, are going to look back and say, the council back in 2004 did the right thing, they started the process for LA, for the region, and gave us the opportunity to get into the business of moving people more efficiently through the region. And so, I'm very happy to support this. I want us to see us move forward in conjunction with SCAG, in conjunction with our fellow council members and mayors from the entire region, in finding what is best for the whole region. I believe Maglev may be the answer. I hope that is what will come out of this process, but we got to begin the process. And while none of us will be there to cut the ribbon probably when this gets open, at least they can say in the future that the council in 2004 did the right thing on putting us on the road to be in the best regional transportation system in the United States once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I rise in complete support of this, and what Councilmember Smith and Villarrealosa have said today is exactly right. We have lagged behind as the second-largest city in this country in terms of being at the table to finally come up with some creative and important transportation solutions. Many of you might not remember, not old enough, I was barely old enough, but in 1960, my father, who was a county supervisor at the time, took his family to Seattle for the World's Fair. And at that point, the monorail was just beginning to emerge as a possible transportation alternative. At that time, the project managers for the monorail offered to build a monorail system in Los Angeles County at no charge to the taxpayers, just so that that kind of prototype could be seen as a viable transportation alternative, and they were willing to do that. As you know, the closest thing we got to that was the monorail that circles the Magic Kingdom. But just think, if in 1960, the forefathers, and they were all forefathers at the time, there were no mothers around at that time, but the forefathers of the city and the county, if they had had the kind of vision that we're talking about right now, to think about how different we would be now if we had a built-in monorail system that was traversing in and around our city and our county. So, what we're doing today, I think, is extremely important. I don't know whether Maglev is the solution or not. I think it's a great idea. Many of us have traveled internationally and seen Maglev in other countries. You go to any other country, and the public transportation system so far exceeds what we have here, that it's almost embarrassing and puts us to shame. I also am a great believer in joint powers authority. I think joint powers authority are a way to do things that the individual members of the authority are not allowed, are not able to do on their own, and a great example of that that I've been involved in and the city's been involved in is the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority, which was a great joint powers authority that was able to build a $2 billion system that was primarily for the use of moving goods more efficiently and effectively out of the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach throughout this country. This is a great opportunity for us to be at the table, and it's about time we started talking about moving people efficiently, instead of just how we move goods efficiently, because frankly, if we can't move people in and around our city and our county, it's not going to matter that we can move goods efficiently. Just to give you an idea of how congested we really are, even though we make that top 10 list every year, we have just 34,000 truck trips that come from the Port of Los Angeles and Long Beach daily. That's how many trucks are on our freeways just in a day. That's going to triple by the year 2025. Unless we do something now to make way for the growth that is coming to Los Angeles, we will cause a gridlock in this city that will stop any kind of talk about economic development or quality of life. Thank you very much, I support this. Said all that to say I support.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Our next speaker is Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I rise in support of this item, but also wanted to shed a little bit of clarity, because in conversations in my district at the community level, there seems to be a little, not misunderstanding, but what we're talking about today is a Maglev system, as supported by other jurisdictions in the Southern California area. SCAG has been involved, we've talked about it here in this city council, and today we're formally becoming a part of that study and planning process. That's more of a regional Southern California, connecting high-density areas and especially our airports in a way that'll be, make Los Angeles easier to get around. Something that's happening concurrently at the state level is a proposed high-speed rail system that connects Southern California, further south, Los Angeles and San Diego, but especially north, out to Sacramento and San Francisco. And where these elements come together really are the metropolitan area of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley especially. So, from my perspective, there's a lot of questions that need to be asked. I believe in taking the step that we're seeking to take today, but at the, for one thing, we need to bring clarity that there are two initiatives that have some sort of overlay, and one could affect the other. I think it's important that we put that on the table so we know from early on, from the early stages, how one may impact the other, but most importantly, how it impacts neighborhoods. Because you're right, Ms. Han, Mr. Cardenas, I think, is going to speak in a minute. When we talk about systems that are in place in other cities around the country and around the world, sometimes they're varying technologies, but one thing that they all have in common is a community impact. So, depending on the technology that's chosen, depending on specific routes that are chosen, it could impact different communities throughout Los Angeles and especially in the valley to different extents, whether they're using existing rail lines like we have along the San Fernando Road Corridor, or other MetroLink corridors, or proposing new routes, maybe in line with existing freeways, maybe completely new lines. I think that's something that is important to put on the table at the very, very early stages, so the community is as educated and informed as possible with the possible impacts and implications of some of these proposals. So, I'm wholeheartedly there in terms of getting the city of Los Angeles to join the other jurisdictions that are already in this process. We need to be a part of that process as well, but I want to lay out the two elements here. Today, we're talking Maglev. I've introduced a motion in today's council meeting to have us further the discussion on the high-speed rail authority side as well, because when we talk about community impacts, routes, technologies, city benefits, as well as the burdens, where the stops are on these different stations or lines, that we need to engage further in that process and put the city not only on record as part of this process with Maglev, but on record with what the city implications and official city positions would be as it relates to the high-speed rail authority. So, with that, colleagues, I too would ask for your support and thank the members of the Transportation Committee and Mr. Villarrealosa, the chairman, for their work on this thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Many times when I stand up in these chambers, I talk about how proud I am of this city or how proud I am of this state or this country, but as Greg Smith alluded to earlier, we are falling behind. We are not the leaders in many areas, and that, I think, affects us as a community, it affects us as a city and as a country and as people. And I can tell you that I rode a Maglev train in Shanghai recently, and let me tell you, it was the smoothest ride I've ever been on in any venue. And we got, we got to about, peaked out at about 220 miles an hour, and it is a running operating system. I'm not here to compare that the way they do things in Shanghai ought to be the way we do things here, but when it comes to transportation, when it comes to leadership, when it comes to us actually investing in our future, this amount of money is paltry compared to what we are losing by not making good decisions today and not doing good things for tomorrow. So, I think it's very important that Angelenos understand, yes, we're going through budget cuts left and right, but at the same time, this truly is a venue, this is truly an opportunity for us to make an investment, an investment that will pay dividends in many, many, many ways. And it's not about bragging rights, it's about truly the value and the quality of life for us as a region, the quality of life for us as an economic force, the quality of life for jobs, all these kinds of things that unfortunately, I think, most people think of as secondarily, rather than when they're focusing on, why are we going to spend 500 and some thousand dollars on a study? While quite frankly, we're not the only ones spending that money, and that money is really a small price to pay for us to get real answers and real solutions, and regardless, even if we never see a Maglev project happen here in our region, I can guarantee you, what we're going to find is other answers and other solutions within this process that perhaps will send us in the right direction. I'd like to see us have a Maglev project or something of that capability here in our region. I think it's important, I think it's something that 20, 30 years from now, people aren't going to think that Maglev is such a big deal, because they're going to see that it is commonplace, and it is effective, it is efficient, and it's the right thing to do. So, I want to thank the Transportation Committee for putting this forth, and I look forward to working with SCAG to make sure that we make this a good decision and make sure that we get good information so we can plan for the future of our city and plan for the future of our region.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and all the previous speakers. Mr. Villarrealosa, thank you very much, and Mr. Smith, as we share the seats on the Transportation Commission. Thanks, SCAG, for their efforts to bring this forward, which is so important. Southern California, very important, not that we're just parochial, that we look to the whole region. And Greg, you spoke well. You know, I was talking to someone today because I kicked off a little initiative for transit, which I'll talk about later, but we talked to a fellow who, we went to San Marino High, and we talked about Huntington Drive. You had this big swath down the middle, Huntington Drive, in this beautiful landscape island. It was there because there was a train that used to run there, the red car, and we had the greatest transit system in the world at one time, and that technology is no longer here. We're trying to build it back in other ways, but now the Maglev comes along. And Tony, as you wrote it in China, there was one in Berlin that I saw the tests long ago, and it's important that we look at this technology to move ahead. Just last week, at this hour, I was in a Senate office building in the Capitol, and our state's great senator, Barbara Boxer, was there, the United States Senator, and she talked first about traffic, because she was a local official. She talked about stop signs and how everybody would come by and slip a little notes on her door, needed stop signs in Marin County to make it safer. I clapped for that, because I know it's important to have that traffic and that neighborhood protection. But at the same time, she talked about long-range issues that are so important to the state, and she brought in, and we were with other cities from throughout the state, this highlights the city's congested, done by the Texas Transportation Institute and their study. Los Angeles, number one in the country with congestion, followed by San Francisco, Oakland, followed then by Chicago, Washington, D.C., and then we have Boston, and then we come back to Southern California with Orange County, San Bernardino Riverside County, Ventura County, San Jose, San Diego. We're stopping our congestion and we're elevating our frustration because of mobility. If we are not mobile, we're not able to do this. Maglev will have a great opportunity for us to look to the future, to make a difference in the future, and it starts today. It starts today with this council's great support, and then it starts today with our continual fight with other leaders of other municipalities and other counties in this region to encourage the state government to show great leadership, to great leadership to bring some type of high-speed rail, high-speed transit to move quickly people throughout this area. So, members, I just want to understand and support that. I want you all to reference the Texas Transportation Institute and the study. With our congestion, it equates to 151 hours, if I'm correct. 151 hours of wasted time sitting in traffic. That's almost four weeks, if I could get my math right there, a little short of that, four weeks of time. Anyway, members, I call that we continue to not only support this, but advocate for it, for the future of all to be mobile in this great region of Los Angeles in Southern California. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate everyone's positive comments today about this project, and I agree with many of you that the importance of looking long-term is really critical. I do have some questions about the source of funding and so forth, because last night, Mr. Labange and I participated, and it was Mr. Labonge and I participated, and it was at his, in his leadership, that we had a meeting with several people who were dealing with the 101 and 405 and all of the potential ideas. Some were multimillion-dollar ideas, some were, you know, hopefully just a, maybe $100,000 ideas, and Mr. Labonge put together a wonderful list, but I would just like to, community engagement, yes, was very important. So I don't, we didn't talk about a couple of things, and maybe Mr. Vierregosa, you could answer this question, the couple of questions, which was the, the source of funding, and two, I'd heard that it was potentially Prop A, potentially Lawa, and I'd like to know, and it may be CLA or CAO can answer this question, which is relative to what's left in the Prop A funds, so that as we make a decision and moving forward, we're looking at the full context. And I could just hold my time, please.
My mic? There we go. Thank you, Ms. Gruel, for that question. Yes, we are looking at the possibility of Lawa funds. There have been some question about whether or not those funds would be available. If they're not, Prop A funds are. My, I don't remember the exact amount in the Prop A account, but I, my recollection was somewhere upwards of 30 million, somewhere in that general vicinity, so this $500,000 amount is a drop in the bucket with respect to what's available in Prop A.
Okay, so my intent would be to get maybe a report back from the CLA and CAO to, and the Department of Transportation relative to the larger source of funds that we're pulling from at that time. My other question is, and talk about the regional approach, what are the other cities that have invested in a, maybe a SCAG question, who are similarly, in essence, beneficiaries of this, their participation? They're probably not as large, obviously, as Los Angeles.
That is a SCAG question. I couldn't give you all the cities.
Maybe, Mark.
You might, Mr. Pisano, maybe you could step forward for a second? And I would just want to say, Ms. Gruel, I don't think that you're suggesting that we not move ahead with this. Is your question with respect to, I mean, I understand that you want an accounting of the Prop A funds, and I'd be more than happy as chair to provide you with that accounting. I don't know if we need, we can't do it here, but we certainly can provide an accounting. I would hope that you're not suggesting that we delay this for that.
No, I just want us to be able to have that information come back as we make decisions.
Mr. Pisano, can you answer the question with respect to the other municipalities that have indicated support and a willingness to fund?
Thank you, Councilman Vierregosa and Councilwoman Gruel. The cities in the region that are now participating in this initial operating segment are the City of Ontario, who has committed to participate in the formation of a joint powers agency along with the, the City of Los Angeles, which is our request today. They also have put forth $200,000 from the City of Ontario, and the San Bernardino Associated Governments has put forth 239,000, which is 439,000 of a $1 million match that we need for, 2.5 million that Senator Feinstein has obtained for the region through the appropriation processes of the last two years.
Okay, and I guess, and the timing on this study, and again, this may be a question for you, Mark, relative to coming back, and this project, as I understand it, it's not only the million-dollar match that we have, but one or $2 million from the federal government. When does the study come back that says we should move ahead? Here's the cost. I know we've done some studies over the last five or six years as to some movement, but...
The timeframe that we have established is two years for the EIS on the project. We have gone through a feasibility study, a feasibility study on, on this line over the last several years, and we're now to the point where we, where we need to launch the environmental impact statement. And the, let me just say that the total cost for the environmental impact study would be for the total expenditure of what in the past, as well as in the future, 15 million dollars. I just want all the numbers to be on the table. And at this, at this point in time, we're pursuing the authorization so that we can have a minimal match for those additional resources, but our time period is two years.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Vierregosa, my biggest issue is just wanting to make sure as we look at long-term transportation items, which I think are critical, at the same time, make sure that as we're looking at Prop A funds or other types of funding sources, that we can do some of those things here locally too, and particularly as we heard last night, the 101, 405, which is the worst, you know, area, if there are items that we can do. So I want to make sure that we always have in the back of our mind those items that we can move in my lifetime as well to see happen, and so I, again, I think that I just wanted to bring that issue up today.
And just to elucidate a little bit the issue, this, this Maglev initiative, should it prove viable and obtain the funding necessary, would impact congestion on the 405. In fact, both in the first leg and the second. The first leg, it goes to the west side, and the second goes all the way to the airport and would impact that traffic, but yes, thank you for that admonition, and we will get an accounting for you to your office with respect to the monies that are available, again, in Prop A. Again, the first effort will be to get this from Lawa because we believe there's a connection between the expenditure of those funds and this effort. If that's not successful, then the second possible source of funding would be Prop A.
Well, I just, and I appreciate you saying that. That's very important to me, and secondly, to look at and help go to some of the other cities that will be beneficiaries as we go forward to add to the coffers there and to ensure that we tell our constituents, because I have a lot of constituents of mine who say, you know, I need to know what's going to happen in a year or two years or three years in my neighborhood, and I know as elected officials, we have to do both sometimes. And so just want to make sure that we are focused and with the Department of Transportation as well, because I know, Wayne, I call you all the time on some of those short-term fixes that we need to do. So I appreciate your, your response, both from Mark and for you, Antonio.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I think it's crucial that we understand that as this particular project evolves, let's understand that we're also dealing with a lot of other pressures. When we talk about supply and demand in housing, we're talking about how people get from one place to the next and this notion of desirability. As more people get tired of spending two, three hours on the freeway just getting to work, and then two, three hours getting back, moving into the city becomes a very desirable notion. These kinds of systems will begin to address the long-term issues, and so as we look at this moving out into the suburbs, the crunch we feel at different intersections, like the 405 and the 101, I have six freeway interchanges in my district, six. So this crunch is constant in certain parts of the city, in other parts, it's during high-traffic hours. This kind of system will begin to create that relief. But just like our quest to change the river, our quest to change the flow of people is going to be just as critical as we improve the flow of water. It takes long-term vision, it takes the kind of stamina from the various bureaucracies, agencies to actually start leveraging what we have. And it gets harder with time because the places that we could have pulled stations are now being built out for residential use or industrial uses, so our station staffs will become, that's more challenging. As you look at the major corridor along the river, along the freeway systems, these trunk lines, they parallel our oil lines, they parallel our power grid, they parallel all these major infrastructural issues that becomes much more costly to move. So the sooner we can get to this, I believe the less cost will be in the long run. So I would wish we could understand what the 560 supports, but as long as I know we're getting our major, at least the initial study's done, it'll give us a sense of how these land use patterns can continue to evolve and start making decisions that affect our major infrastructural connections, such as our power sources, our oil lines, our major transportation corridors. Again, we need to start planning now to get ready for those changes. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I join all my colleagues in supporting this. Coming from the far west San Fernando Valley, where it takes an hour and a half to get to City Hall and maybe two hours to get back to the southwest San Fernando Valley, I don't have the luxury of a public transit system. Well, sometimes on the motorcycle, but that's dangerous. I don't have the benefit of a public transit system if I want to go to LAX, and it's a, maybe you wake up at 4:00 in the morning to get to LAX for a flight to leave. It's much more convenient for me in the valley to go to Burbank, but they don't fly everywhere that LAX flies. So it's, it's clear that the people in the valley have been complaining a long time about lack of infrastructure when it comes to transportation. As we all know, when we have to go to meetings, if it's in the civic center, that's a positive productive meeting. If we have to travel to a remote distance, and many of my meetings are out in the San Fernando Valley, it's quite a task fighting the 101, fighting the traffic, the congestion, and then when you have to go to the airport, it's also more problems. I've seen some of the plans, I've seen some of the renditions of the, of the Maglev. I know that Las Vegas has become very successful with the project they completed linking the airport to the different hotels to move people around Las Vegas. They attract a lot of conventions, attract a lot of money. This is long, long overdue, and I understand the population in our region is going to go from 4 million to about 6 and 1/2 million by 2020. We don't have an infrastructure support that. Our gridlock that we have today will worsen, and I don't know how much worse it can get, but I guess the two-hour commute will turn to a four-hour commute. So I support this. As I understand, it's not going to be general fund money, it's going to come out of other funds, which is not going to affect our police, our public safety, and I think that with the efforts of DOT and I see our general manager, Wayne Tonda, here from DOT, to put it together, and up Northern California, they've got some, the BART system, which seems to be very effective. I know my son uses that when he travels up from Berkeley to that area of San Francisco. We don't have that opportunity down here, and it's long, long overdue. So with the assistance of DOT and SCAG and everyone here, I know that you're here today supporting this project, and I hope that all of my colleagues, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, will get this project underway, get the study completed, not hurt our general fund, and get some relief that we desperately need for transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge, for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Gruel, I hate to pull the T-card on you, but you said you don't want to do the, you want this done in your lifetime? Well, I want to talk about Tom, your Tom, your beautiful baby boy, and if we think about that, we think about the children, and Mr. Zine, as you spoke of, the explosion of population, 70% is in basin. That means 70%, I'm looking for a little collaboration, shake, I'm right at 70%. That means anyone who lives south of the great San Gabriel Mountains, the great San Bernardino Mountains, this great basin, 70% is going to be the population explosion, and they're not coming from other places, they're here right now. And I want to make a little reminder that I felt bad that we did not, as a city do. In 1978, there was a small clause that would cause for more undergrounding of electrical wires to beautify the communities. Mr. Deaton, you remember that? But because of Prop 13, they stopped undergrounding systems throughout Los Angeles and Southern California. Just think if they started and kept that up in 78, all that undergrounding that people complain about, that would have been done. And just think if in 1978, they fought hard for this type of development for right now, for the right now, it would have made a great impact. So I just wanted to rise again to remind Wendy to think of her wonderful son, Tom, and every other, Thomasina and Tom in the, in the basin, because of the importance for the future of mobility for all of them. And this morning, when I rode the subway to North Hollywood and then came back downtown, there were students from the central part of Los Angeles going to schools in the valley. There were workers going from Hollywood out to Burbank to go to Disney and work there. There were people from Sherman Oaks, Sherman Oaks coming down by a subway system. Now, one day, there hopefully will be a Maglev that they'll move throughout the region and enjoy this great place with much better style in their mind because of we relieve the congestion. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 50, called special by Councilmember Ms. Skouski.
Ms. Skouski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I introduced this motion when we were last in session to deal with a matter that I, that caused me a little bit of concern. This was the issue of audits and asking our proprietary departments to, asking the CAO to have an audit of our proprietary departments, asking for an outside agency to come in and give them suggestions for how to better do RFP, contracting, consulting, et cetera. And while that is a very, very good idea, on February 17th, the Board of Airport Commissions had passed a motion authorizing the executive director to do the same thing, to put out a request for proposal for professional consulting services regarding Lawa's procurement and reengineering practices. As I read the Lawa report about what they were asking, and I subsequently read the CAO's report about what they were asking, it seemed to me to be one and the same thing. Under the issue of transparency, the Lawa board-approved report for an RFP says, "Review and critique existing procurement policies and procedures to ensure adequate transparency in an RFP evaluation process." The CAO's RFP, which is already out on the street, asks for establishing written procedures to ensure a high degree of transparency in the solicitation, evaluation, selection, and award process of RFPs. Under best practices, the Lawa study is supposed to review and examine Lawa's procurement and purchasing processes and practices and procedures and internal controls to validate that LA, Lawa has best practices to identify any problem. The CAO report says, "Conduct surveys to develop comprehensive recommendations for best practices." It seemed to me redundant, it seemed to me duplicative. The Lawa report, which has already been approved, asked for this RFP to go out and spend up to $500,000. The CAO report is open-ended. The RFP that's out there now asks consultants to come back and tell them how they're going to do this for how much money. It seemed, and there's another footnote, the CAO report, which has already gone out, the RFP has gone out, hasn't come to counsel, at least yet, because the, as the mayor instructed the CAO, the three proprietary departments are supposed to pay for the CAO RFP study. So we're asking Lawa, on one hand, to pay for 1/3 of the report that the CAO has now gotten RFP out to do, and Lawa has spent up to $500,000 of its own money to do a duplicative report. So I have asked the CAO, the mayor's office, and the, and the Lawa to come here and explain to me how, when I read those two documents side by side, and they are exactly duplicative, how and why we shouldn't consolidate them, how and why we shouldn't have some coordination. Now, there has been some discussion, and I think Ms. Karen Sisson, who is here from Lawa, has said, "Well, despite what's in that report, there are other things Lawa really wants to do," and some of the things she suggested they really want to do make sense and may be different from what the board report suggests in terms of this global picture. But at best, if we're going to be spending taxpayer dollars or, or public dollars one way or the other, we ought not to be spending them to have two consultants out there to tell us from two different agencies how an agency should do exactly what best practices are. We should have coordination, we should get the best amount for our money, and make sure that details of one agency that they might know better are able to be sought in terms of an RFP consultant rather than just to duplicate it, let alone have two outside contractors for perhaps the same amount of money to do the same thing that may be in somewhat of a conflict. So if I can have the CAO and perhaps Lawa come forward and discuss how they might make some suggestions, if, if not a consolidation, then a coordination to make sure that these two things aren't redundant, as I say, particularly when you read what we're asking consultants to do that read exactly the same thing. And I just read two comparative things on process improvement, on competitive bidding, and on other items, they are, again, the words may be slightly different, but they say exactly the same thing. So, Mr. CAO and Ms. Sisson, can you help clarify?
Okay. I'll be happy to begin. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Karen Sisson, and I'm the chief financial officer for Los Angeles World Airports. As the councilwoman mentioned, the board report that was issued on February 17th was quite broad. It did actually direct staff to look at a number of items and was not specific as to which one. which ones. The board report actually says, "Please look at these among the following." And some of the items that are in the report do address the very items that are now being contemplated in the CAO's RFP. At LAUA, we see this basically as a sequential process. We look at the CAO RFP as basically phase one of what will be a two-phase process, with the CAO RFP looking at issues of governance, internal control, and regulatory environment, and providing a framework for some of the more operational issues that we, as a department, would like to look at. The operational issues I'm speaking to are really listed in the board report on the third page, there are four of them. They discuss developing a reengineering approach to improve the performance of procurement and purchasing processes, practices, and procedures that leverages the experience of LAUA staff. And the board's intent there, I believe, was really to look at the how-to, how do we do procurement given this framework? We also were asked to develop an RFP that looked at new procurement and purchasing processes, including new technology, if appropriate, and we asked for the design of a realistic implementation plan. In addition, we asked for a procurement and purchasing process that would leverage the recent implementation of SAP Financial System, which we installed two years ago. So I just point that out because we do see this as sequential, and we do see the RFP that the CAO is doing as providing a framework for us to then take and look at the actual processes themselves moving forward.
I'll just add some very brief comments. The structure Karen described is something we fully support, because I know initially there's concerns that if both audits were handled concurrently, there would be a duplication of effort. But given the sequential nature of the structure defined by Karen, I think we have the best process right now because we feel that our audit could provide the foundation. And there's the element of bringing in, you know, some best practices from other parts of the private industry can also help add to that initial framework.
All right. Members, I, at this point, I think we now have some agreement that there will be some degree of sequential process. And since the CAO's, the RFP has been out, in fact, I note that the response to the proposals the CAO issued are actually due tomorrow, March 17th. And since the airports is not out yet, the airports RFP can now be refined, both in light of what the CAO will get in bids, and perhaps even deferred until we get some of the initial responses back, not only from, after a bidder has been selected to do the CAO work, but what they're going to do and how they're going to do it, it may fit very well then with sequentialing. But at this point, it didn't look like that was what was going to happen. The board had acted in February, then the CAO acted in March, and it looked like we were on a duplicative course. So just to ensure coordination, I'm going to ask that the, by way of a motion, that the CAO report back, perhaps to audit an efficiency committee, one, the results after your RFP review has, of the bidders has been made as you're selecting a bidder, and then to just make sure that we coordinate with the airport. And Ms. Sisson, if you will go back to the Board of Airport Commission and share with them the CAO report, this CAO RFP that's already out there, what it's asking for, and coordinate with the CAO as to what is the response he gets from bidder, and then what the timeline will be, so then it can better facilitate your fine-tuning of what you would then be looking for later and being informed by some of the work that the CAO's audit, CAO's RFP response might provide, both the airport as well as our other agencies. Then I think we will be ensuring non-duplicative, and the advantage to LAUA is to take advantage of what the CAO's RFP bid might provide to LAUA in terms of helping better define what you really need to focus on more specifically. So, members, if that's okay, I'll ask this, go to CAO and that we have report back when the CAO, to the audits and efficiency committee, and that we report, the CAO report back when their audits are ready, the bids, a selection is able to be made on receipt of the RFP bids and move forward in coordinating it after that.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Skouski. We had always intended that this be a coordinated approach, because it doesn't matter if you are someone outside the city contracting with the Port Authority, or the airport, or DDP, or recreation parks, or general services. And that when we proposed having some kind of standard, it was under our impression that the CAO would be the lead on doing that, and that we would not duplicate efforts. And we do not want to have, as we talk about frequently, government efficiency being oxymoron, that in fact, we are trying to be efficient. It does not make sense to have separate reviews, that the CAO is an independent body in doing that and coordinating it. And again, with the limited budget and the kinds of issues that are going forward, I agree wholeheartedly and second in Ms. Skouski's motion about the importance of having one coordinated effort. And so we will count on you, Bill, to ensure that this independent kind of review will come back in that form and fashion, and to ensure that our departments are not spending money that they do not need to, and that it is seen as something that is going to actually be usable after. So appreciate that and appreciate Ms. Skouski's recommendation that it come back to audits and government efficiency.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, is everybody clear on the course of action here?
Yes.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Keep us posted. Next item, please.
Item number 52, called special for card from the public.
You have one speaker card on item 52. Mr. Jim Rodriguez, would you please come forward at this time?
[inaudible].
Okay, he's forwarded a proposal, his card will be added to the file. Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, March 31st, and Tuesday, April 20th, excuse me, April 20th. April 20th is for personal business, March 31st is for city business, and they both meet council policy.
Ms. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, March 26th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Gruehl requests to be excused Wednesday, March 17th, for city business. Motion is required.
Ms. Cardenas moves. Ms. Gruehl is excused.
Councilmember Ms. Skouski requests to be excused Wednesday, April 7th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Skouski is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, April 2nd, for personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Garcetti moves. Ms. Cardenas is excused.
Council President Pidea requests to be excused Friday, June 4th, for personal business. That meets council policy. And also Wednesday, March 31st, for personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Parks moves. Excuse granted.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused March 30th and 31st, for city business. A motion is required on the 31st.
Ms. Reyes moves. Ms. Parks is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Anything before going into closed session, members? If not, then in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers.
We are back in open session. Madam Clerk, what is before us?
Okay, the first item is item number 56, and that's settlement, City of Los Angeles versus Southwestern Properties, and that's to pay an additional $1 million in this partial payment of the settlement.
All right. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved.
Next item is item number 57, and that's in the case of Jacobson versus City of Los Angeles, in the amount of $189,343.20.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved.
Okay, the next item is item number 59, that settlement in the case of City versus RWR Development, and that's to authorize the acceptance of $220,000 in payment in full settlement.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved.
The next item is item number 55, and that's a worker's comp claim, Francis Howard versus City, in the amount of $106,375.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That matter is also approved.
Next one's item number 60, and that's worker's comp case, Kurt Wies versus City of Los Angeles, in the amount of $139,495.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That matter is also approved.
Item number 61 is settlement, worker's comp, Morales versus City of Los Angeles, and that's the amount of $118,277.50.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That matter is also approved.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, let's send all the settlement items forthwith. Members, are there any announcements? Are there any? Mr. Labonge for an announcement.
I just wanted to tell everybody to take public transit. It's a great thing to do. I took it this morning, I just wanted to advocate again. Take transit on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Thank you.
All right. Any other announcements? Any adjourning motions?
Announce two announcements.
Oh, announcement, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. On Saturday, March 20th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the Southeast Neighborhood Council will have their first area assembly meeting. It will be held at the 93rd Street School located at 330 East 93rd Street. Also, on Sunday, March 21st, at 3:30 p.m., the City of Los Angeles Cultural Affairs Department, along with the African Marketplace, will host a reception in honor of Women's History Month at the Vision Theater at 3341 West 43rd Street. The honorees for this year will be Valerie Goodlow, Dr. Mamie Clayton, Congresswoman Diane Watson, actress Shirley Lee Ralph, and Paula Madison, general manager, vice president of Channel 4.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements? Mr. Labonge.
I must have hit my head, but tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day. And tomorrow, we're going to honor the great St. Patrick's Day with a parade in the great Ninth District, in Jan Perry's district, but also we're having the civic ceremonies for over 100 years. The Irish have gathered here at this City Hall or at others to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. And you know, there's a performance and a splendor of all the Irish tomorrow, plus some recognition of some outstanding leaders. Our council meeting is to start at 9:30 tomorrow with the presentation, so we hope you could be here at 9:30, so that we wrap up the great celebration closer to 10 o'clock, so we are able to engage in the rest of our normal agenda. So a reminder, council starts tomorrow at 9:30 in honor of St. Patrick's Day, followed by a parade through the heart of Los Angeles and a concert at Persian Square. Thank you.
Thank you for that announcement, Mr. Labonge. Any other announcements? Any tributes? We do have tributes. Would everyone please stand for adjourning motions?
You want to do Rocky? Rocky Campanella, you want to second?
Let me recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Roxy Campanella, the widow of Dodger Hall of Fame catcher, Roy Campanella. She was a tireless advocate for victims of spinal cord injury. She carried on her husband's legacy, visiting many paralyzed patients in hospital care facilities, reminded them that their mind had not failed even though their bodies had. Since 1994, she has been the mainstay in the Roy and Roxy Campanella Foundation, and it provided almost $200,000 in physical therapy scholarships to students. Most recently, because of her failing health, she put forth her husband's memorabilia collection, including his three most valuable player awards, and raised in an auction of over $600,000 for this foundation. She died at the age of 77 on Sunday, March 14th. Funeral arrangements are being prepared. And Ms. Perry would like to be second on that. Ms. Reyes? Okay. Also, I'd have adjourning in honor of Chuck Niles, who was the only jazz radio host to be awarded a star on Hall of Fame, on Walk of Fame. He died at the age of 76 on Monday, March 15th. He was born in Springfield, Massachusetts, in '28, and began his musical career at the age of seven, became a professional saxophone player, came to Southern California to pursue an acting career. He worked for KHJ TV, which is now KCAL, as an afternoon movie show host. He later went on to radio at the K-Fox. He developed a long-lasting relationship in the jazz music arena. He later hosted programs on KPCA, which became KKGO and switched to the classical music. But he is noted after 14 years as a drive-time host, that he's basically been viewed as the, had more musical arrangements written about him and his career than any other jazz station host. He leaves his wife Nancy and daughter Tracy. Funeral arrangements will be, is pending.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. With great regret, I announced the passing of Cheryl Lynn Mabye Rubensall. Cheryl Lynn, at the age of 56, peacefully passed away surrounded by family in Los Angeles on March 5th, 2004. Cheryl was born in Los Angeles, California, to her parents Judson Tyler Mabye and Thelma Lee Mabye on June 8th, 1947. She grew up in La Habra, California. Cheryl's life was dedicated to the service of others. After graduating from Mount St. Mary's College, she pursued a master's of arts degree in political science from Purdue University, and later received her law degree from Loyola Law School. For over 20 years, Cheryl shaped the lives of young women at Mount St. Mary's College, where at the age of 26, she became the youngest dean in the college's history. As dean of students and executive director of the Women's Leadership Program, she developed a model women's leadership program, and was chosen as a Calog National Leadership Fellow. She also served as a consultant to universities, governmental agencies, community groups, and professional organizations. While married to her husband, Jack Rubensall, and raising her son Tyler, Cheryl also became the director of La Paz, a project funded by the Ford Foundation to advocate for student success. Cheryl later went on to be the founder and executive director of Project Grad here in Los Angeles, an educational not-for-profit organization dedicated to increasing the number of urban youth entering and succeeding in college. More than anything, Cheryl was dedicated to her family. She is survived by her husband, Jack, son Tyler, sister Carla, and nephews Ryland and Judson Bouchard. Her funeral was held on March 10th this past week. And I'd also like to comment that the Project Grad is a project that is at San Fernando High School, which has probably at least 90% minority students. And what they do is dedicate a tremendous amount of funds and effort to get children prepared for college and give them scholarships in the range of $2,500 a year throughout their college career. And I'd like to point out that during her funeral, a young minority boy who knew her said she was cool. A white lady who cared about Latino kids. I'd like to share that with you, there's no need to mention his name, but I think it's a testimony to good people who reach out to others and who break barriers. And for that young boy to say that and to acknowledge that certainly probably will allow him to understand that sometimes our barriers are in our mind, and people like Cheryl break down those barriers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of another administrator of Los Angeles Unified School District, Betty Pfeifer, who was a classroom school teacher at Rowan Avenue Elementary School, who taught with my mother 35 years ago at Rowan Avenue. Later, she was the principal at City Terrace. Betty and her husband Ray, Betty lived in Silverlake in Mr. Garcetti's district, but her efforts as a administrator for the school district, her friendship was another great person who lived to be 72 years of age. She died with a battle of cancer. She survived by her husband Ray and also her daughter Anne Pfeifer, who's a senior advisor to Congressman Adam Schiff. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Betty Pfeifer of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Other members? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to join in the
I'd also like to join in the tribute to Roxy Campanella. She was a resident of Woodland Hills. Her passing was at her residence. I have two adjourning motions. Blanche Morton Hergit passed away February 27th. Blanche from Winnetka, she had loving wife, mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother, and great-great-grandmother. She was born November 11th, 1898, to John and Mary Morton Peoria, Illinois. There she attended school in a one-room classroom, in a one-room school. Love of Blanche's life was Anton Tony Hergit, whom she married at age 23 on September 15th, 1922, in Peoria, Illinois. Blanche and Tony were blessed with four children. In 1936, Tony and Blanche headed west for California with their children. The family moved to Sherman Oaks in 1957. Her final years were spent at Woodland Care Center. She was 105 years old when she passed away. She is survived by daughter Bernice, grandchildren Sheila, John, great-grandchildren Danielle, son James Hergit, and grandchildren Vicky, Cheryl, Diana, and James, great-grandchildren James Jr., Janelle, Holly, Dylan, Anthony, Randy, Daniel, and Christie. Her Sam family will remember her, as she rests in peace. Also request for adjourn in memory of Charles Chuck Bloomfield, passed away March 1st. Chuck Bloomfield, San Fernando Valley Community Business Leader, passed away on March 1st at home of pancreatic cancer. Chuck was born in Chicago on June 15th, 1943, earned a business degree from the University of Miami. He was a very private man, who was concerned primarily with the welfare of other people, especially those with no voice in the system. He presented legislators with proposals for new laws, and he served on many commissions and committees to voice his concerns on healthcare, taxation, transportation, and especially fairness. He loved to collect clocks, mineral and rock specimens, sculpture, art, and cars. Chuck was a loving man and will be greatly missed by his family and friends. May Charles Chuck Bloomfield rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.